The Stillwater Planning Commission meeting of July 16th will now come to order. It will be the process this evening to call for items on the agenda. The commission will hear briefly from staff first, then the applicant and/or their representative, then open the public hearing and hear from those in favor and/or in opposition to the request. When you come to the podium, please clearly state your name and address for the record. Before closing the public hearing, both staff, the applicant, and/or their representative will be provided an opportunity to respond to provide additional information and answer questions. After all interested parties have spoken, the public hearing will be closed. We will hear closing remarks and alternatives from staff. With that, the first item that we have tonight is under general orders, and that is discussion, consideration, and possible action to approve a resolution number PC 2024-1. We will hear from Brady Moore.
Yes, good evening, planning commissioners. Brady Moore, deputy city manager. It's been a few minutes since I've been in front of this board presenting to you, so I just want to say it's an honor to be here tonight to talk about this project, and also I just want to say thank you for your public service, for your part in this public process and volunteering to be on the Planning Commission. It is a great benefit to our community, and so we appreciate your time. You know, sometimes you see zoning projects, short-term rentals, some things that are not so fun, but tonight is one of those exciting projects that is being presented for you. One of the key functions of a city is to encourage economic development, to stimulate growth, and to attract new business to the community. Economic development and increasing our economy and business community in the city is an important part of not just a thriving and vibrant city, but also just enhancing the overhaul and increasing the quality of life and the opportunities that a community can have. And so tonight, we have an economic development project that is being presented to you to look at how it conforms to the current zoning, to where that project is going to be located, and to the conformance to our comprehensive plan. This slide has a lot of text on it. I'll just kind of go over it briefly, but one way that communities and cities and municipalities can attract new businesses through tax incentives. As you all know and are familiar with, in this town, we have multiple TIF districts. That T-I-F that we call TIF stands for Tax Incentive Financing. Another mechanism that we're going to be talking about this evening is TID, so where you see T-I-D is a tax incentive district. And so where a TIF district takes the increment on increases to property tax, ad valorem, personal property and real property, and also sales tax increase. So those increments, and you can use those by state law to help finance projects and help projects get implemented in a city, similar to Hatch, Stone Cloud, and a lot of the TIF projects that you've seen around town. A TID district is a little different in the fact that it allows, it's a mechanism that the state allows through the Constitution and the Local Development Act that allows, if all the taxing jurisdictions in a community agree that they want to incentivize a certain area of land, and they all come together and agree on it, they can establish a TID. So the incentive district allows you to basically eliminate the property tax, so the ad valorem property and real property and personal property tax on a set boundary of land. And it can go anywhere from, you know, zero to 100% exemption, and one of the ways that you can work out these exemptions with your local taxing jurisdictions is through pilots. That's a term for payments in lieu of taxes. And so we'll go through some of this agreement that was in your packet. Just I want to give you an overall view of the project, and then we will kind of go into what the Planning Commission is specifically reviewing this evening. An overview of the project. The project is a data center campus development. Under that state code, under that code, the Local Development Act allows for a TID district to have exemption up to 25 years. So a lot of the projects in the Local Development Act allow up to five years, but specifically it writes this clause for data center development. The state of Oklahoma has identified that this is an area that they want to be competitive to attract new business to the state, and so allowing this 25-year exemption is very attractive to these data center companies. And as we'll look through here, the project has six phases, so they are looking at doing a data center campus in Stillwater. Two phases are very likely, and I can go into a little bit of that, but that is based on an extensive amount of work that our engineering and the engineers for the project have worked together for many years, looking at Stillwater and what Stillwater can offer. And so two phases is very likely, but there is a potential that six phases could be developed here in Stillwater. The total amount of, or the minimum amount of investment per phase is 500 million. So we're talking about an extensive amount of money coming to our community through construction and through development, and so the total project could be upwards of over $3 billion. One of the notes here on this slide is 30 new quality jobs per phase. And as I mentioned before, and I'll go into it a little more, as you see in the project plan, the pilot, that payment in lieu of tax that can go to the taxing jurisdictions is a great revenue, new revenue source for our school districts, our county, and also our city. The location that we are looking, or the company is looking to develop that we are looking at this evening is this land that's highlighted on the slide that's in front of you. This is to the east of Perkins Road between Richmond and Airport Road with Jardo on the east. The area highlighted in that mile section, the two kind of structures that you see in this that are not included in the project site would be Armstrong there to the southwest on the mile section, and then the Stillwater Energy Center to the southeast on that mile section. The highlighted area is about 395 acres, and as I described earlier, the six phases of the project are identified here. So you can see there, sections one and section two that are the most likely phases are, sit on the northeast area of the property. Again, as we looked at the evaluation of the project, the company has asked for 100% of exemption of ad valorem and ad valorem, personal and real property on the project site. Again, as I mentioned, in order to fit with Oklahoma Local Development Act and Oklahoma State Law, one reason for this incentive would be to attract new business to the site that would, so that we can be competitive with other states in the country. It is an enterprise area, and I've already gone through the Local Development Act. So some of the benefits to the public, again, 500 million in new investment per phase, pilot payments to the taxing entities for each phase. These pilot payments are attractive, especially to the school district, because it does not affect their state aid. It's funds that can go into their general fund, and so it is, it's an exciting project for what it could do for our school districts. There are community betterment payments, as you saw in the project plan. These are payments that come to the city to help, yeah, go towards better public amenities and better public infrastructure for the city. And so in addition, there's, as I mentioned, about 30 new high-quality jobs per phase. I'd say it's probably 20 to 30 per phase, and so that's exciting to bring those jobs, new jobs, to Stillwater. Significant amount of construction as this data center campus is built out, lots of construction jobs, extensive amount of materials that will be delivered and constructed here in Stillwater. And because this phase obviously sits inside our city limits, those sales tax and use tax will be a great benefit to the community. Quickly, I'll go through this slide. This is the elements of the project plan. Again, 100 exemptions, 100% exemption, they're looking at periods for 25 years for each phase. The entities included in the exemption that will have access to this new revenue is the City of Stillwater, Payne County, Stillwater Public Schools, Meridian Technology, and the Payne County Health Department. Governing bodies for each of these entities approve their own, they have to approve the exemption. Every taxing jurisdiction has to approve the project plan before it can become final. So just to go over real quick the approval process, the review committee is established, the TIF or TID review committee, excuse me, review committee is established to review each project plan. This is established in the state statute, and one of the members is a member of the Planning Commission. Our chair, Janet Phillips, sat on that committee last week along with the other taxing jurisdictions, a member from each taxing jurisdiction, and three citizens that were selected among a list of seven. The mayor, Will Joyce, sits as the chair of that committee. The committee reviewed the project plan last week and approved unanimously the recommendation for it to proceed through the public process. Well, the next steps in the public process is what we're doing tonight, presenting to you the Planning Commission to determine the conformance with the comprehensive plan and the zoning, current zoning. Then we will then have a public notice and two public hearings at city council, hopefully in August, but those dates are to be determined. And as I just mentioned, within 60 days of council approving the project plan, that each individual taxing jurisdiction will have their own boards approve the project plan in the incentive agreement. As we look at zoning for the project site, the current zoning for the land identified in the project plan is general industrial. It was rezoned from public to general industrial under ordinance 3535. The second read was at city council in May of this year. The 2030 future land use map that I grabbed a little snippet of that's included in this slide shows that the area for, that in our 2030 comprehensive plan on the future land use map, as it projected growth in Stillwater, it did project this as industrial with a really small section, that is a square section right there on the northwest corner of the mile section at Airport Road, or sorry, excuse me, Richmond and Perkins Road to be commercial. But the rest of that site was identified to be industrial. But again, the current zoning that went before the Planning Commission earlier this year and was adopted and approved by the city council is general industrial, which meets the use of the site, or the project. Excuse me. As we look at the 2030 C-3 comprehensive plan, chapter two, goals and guiding principles, subsection seven, it says, "Seek greater diversity and employment opportunities for area residents to include a variety of jobs, cultural amenities, and services that make a positive contribution to the community." And section B says, "Guide new technology, industrial, and commercial development to appropriate areas of the community." And then section D says, "Encourage the new development of existing and new technology, technological, industrial sites to provide growth opportunities for current and future employers in the community." So again, as I talked early in the presentation, is, you know, a major objective and role of a city is to stimulate and encourage economic development growth. It's a vital part of a community, and so in our comprehensive plan that was adopted, I believe in 2012, 2011, 2012, this is the, these are some guiding principles that were adopted in that plan. And so tonight, at Planning Commission, your task in reviewing the proposed project plan and determining its conformance with the current zoning and the 2030 C-3 comprehensive plan. Resolution PC 2024-1 was included in your packet for this evening and is there for your review and consideration of approval. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
I know these data centers consume a high quantity of water. I don't know that this will be any different. So where is the proposed water coming from? Is that coming from Coop Reservoir through the pipeline or what?
Yeah, so the majority of data centers do require water. There are some that don't use water. There's other new technologies. This one, they've been working with our water engineers, and all of that has been, the due diligence on that is being worked out, but where those first two phases fit in, the capacity, our available amount to serve is sufficient, but they're still working on even, you know, more advantageous ways to see if it's clean water or raw water, as you suggested. So some great engineers are working through all of this, but all those details will be worked out in an economic development agreement that will go to city council at the same time as the adoption of this TID district or the project plan.
What's the current condition of that pipeline? I know there's been discussions the past couple of decades about maintenance, about replacing it.
Yeah, so the Coop Pipeline is, it still serves our community, but it is definitely getting up in its age. We have plans that we've been presenting to city council for years, as far as our water engineers have, as far as our plan to address our water system. It first begins with improvements at our water treatment plant, establishing a new pipeline that would go to Lake McMurtry to our water plant, and that would give us the ability to shut down sections of our Coop Pipeline to work on repairs and start to rehabilitate the Coop Pipeline, but it's still serving our purpose. It's a 48-inch steel pipe that has had a long life, but it still brings us our water. And so, yeah.
So the water coming out is warmer than the water going in, right? I mean, they're using it to cool.
Yeah, so you're talking about the, yeah.
You refer to as wastewater in here. I'm assuming it's almost the same volume of water going in.
Well, it's, that information has not been fully given. I mean, they have some, they have some unique proprietary technologies, but yes, there is a wastewater component, sure. Water in is water out. I mean, there's water coming out. Yep.
And isn't it warmer or not?
I can't, I honestly don't know about temperature, but I know that they have full-on testing, DEQ is involved. All those factors are worked out before we, you know, allow them to discharge that much water into our wastewater treatment plant. So we have engineers that have been working on this for, again, for years, and they, there's been a significant amount of testing already on our current wastewater treatment plant because we are a biological plant, which means we have bugs that eat everything, and so we are, we know that we can only allow so much new intake into our water treatment plant without disturbing the process, and the company knows this, too. They are, they have an incredible team of engineers that are working through all this information, and they have a vast history of developing these plants in similar communities.
Are there any issues with noise?
There is a noise component to these data centers, and they have to meet all of our current noise ordinances, and so they, again, have calculated all those things and made sure that it would not be a disturbance or would not elevate beyond the levels of our noise ordinances.
There is reference made in these documents about this development encouraging further development in Stillwater necessarily, data centers, but has there been any discussion on that beyond just wishing?
Yeah, you bet, Mike. That's a great, that's a great point. That's been one of the things the company has been very transparent about is that the amount of, what do you want to call it, overflow of economic development?
Spillover, whatever.
Yeah, spillover, yep. Because a lot of their maintenance, a lot of the services that they provide are all contracted locally. So they don't have, they, like, you didn't, when you see a project per phase of over 500 million with, what, 300,000 square foot facilities per phase, you would think, wow, that's more than 20 to 30 employees, but it's because they do contract so much locally. So they have fewer employees that are like company employees that work inside those data centers, but a lot of contracted labor for maintenance, cleaning, and those type of
How much power is this going to be consuming?
A significant amount of power, yeah. It's, the amount per load, I mean, we've worked through that with our engineering teams, but they are looking at having this site served through OG&E, and so there would be a franchise fee that is required to the city, and so it's still a benefit to the city, great benefit to the city. And so some of those details are still being worked out, but there would be a vote of the people for that franchise fee to be, well, for, to allow OG&E to come into our city limits to serve.
What's the difference between these pilot payments and what are called benefit payments?
Yeah, so the pilot payments are payment in lieu of tax, so that would be the payments to the taxing jurisdictions.
Right.
And the community betterment payments are just payments to the city to help be a good community partner, to help have a benefit, you know, when we, there's small things lost to the city when you're, have exempt land, so I mean, we're a taxing government as well taxing jurisdiction, and so it's a way to give the local taxing, the city, these community betterment payments. And as you see, I think in the project plan, we've proposed where that revenue would go, and it's a lot of things that we believe the public and the community and anybody wanting to locate in Stillwater would see as a benefit. This is going to public amenities, parks, park operations, some of those things, capital improvements and infrastructure improvements that we've struggled as a city to fund, and this is a mechanism that's going to help us fund a lot of these improvements that not just one company or one group of people can enjoy the benefit of, but our entire citizen
You know, I have a, I actually have a lot of questions, but it seems like what you've asked us to do, or maybe our purview is specific to whether or not this economic development plan fits within the comprehensive plan. Is that?
Yes, sir.
Really sort of our scope here?
Yes, the two, the two items that are under your review tonight and for your consideration on that resolution are, does the current project, industrial project, fit within the current zoning, which is industrial, and does it fit the goals and objectives of the C-3 comprehensive plan? And so.
Chair, if I may, staff has worked with the Center for Economic Development Law, which is the city's special counsel for these matters, to prepare the proposed resolution. So by approving the resolution this evening, that's exactly right, the Planning Commission would be finding that this data center economic development project plan is in conformance with the Stillwater C-3 comprehensive plan, and that the Planning Commission recommends that city council approve and adopt the Stillwater Data Center Economic Development Project Plan. So that is what we are asking for your consideration this evening.
So at this time, I'll just add, I did receive an email and sent it to staff. I don't know if we got it sent to everyone. There was a local citizen who had questions very similar to what's been asked this evening, but to your point, vice chair, not necessarily things under our purview to restrict or review and comment on and weigh in our consideration. So the gentleman that sent that, it's Mr. Gagliardi, I think, if I can get his name correct. I hope I did not butcher that. I think those would be more appropriately brought up at the public hearings that will be held at city commission, so. With that, commissioners, is there anyone entertaining a motion or any discussion pertaining to the comprehensive plan or the zoning?
I mean, well, you know, as far as discussion goes, it seems like the findings kind of point us to the answer. And actually, the action stated that we've already accepted it, so maybe I misreading that, but.
So I think the possible action could be, as you're reading there in our packet.
Okay.
So that could, that could be a motion?
If I may help, yeah, so we're looking for a motion to approve resolution number PC 2024-1, accepting, trying to sync that up, the findings of the Stillwater Data Center Economic Development Project Plan in compliance with the comprehensive plan and recommending approval of the economic development project plan to the city council.
So just a point of process here, do we need to include the PC number in the motion?
That would be ideal.
So as chair, chair moves to accept the findings for the Stillwater Data Center Economic Development Project Plan and recommend PC 2024-1 for approval by the city commission.
Second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. We shall now vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a short-term rental, STR 0169. As I understand, the applicant has asked to table this to the next meeting, which would be August 6th. Okay, so chair would entertain a motion to do so?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I want to ask if there's any discussion. The chair would just ask while we're talking about the STRs if there's any update on any guidance from the city as far as the STRs go.
City manager's office and the city attorney's office are working towards proposed revisions. It is my understanding that we are working towards a full presentation to the city council on short-term rentals in the city in connection with those proposed changes. We are working on it. We understand that it's been a concern of this commission, and you've been heard, we're working through it. I know it's taken some time, but that is the current status, as I'm aware.
Do we have a target date for that?
I will request that information from the city manager's office. I'm not sure if it's on the agenda planner yet, but we will report back at the next meeting.
That would be great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We shall now vote. Motion passes unanimously. The item is tabled to the August 6th meeting. Next item on the agenda is miscellaneous items from staff, planning commissioners, or the city attorney for discussion and possible action. The one item that is listed is that the next scheduled meeting, as noted previously, is August 6th. The last item on the agenda is adjournment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
We have a motion and a second. We shall now vote. We have a motion and a second, we shall now vote. Motion passes unanimously, we now stand adjourned.